Melanie Sutton, County P E Coordinator.
Jim Anderson, C O L.
America Sullivan, Executive Assistant.
Katie Grant, Strategic Assistant.
Kelly Lessons, Board Member.
And this will.
Cindy Humphrey, Director for Elementary Education.
Eric Basty speaking, Director for Elementary Education.
And we have anyone online?
Yes, we have Dr. Bryant.
Oh, thank you. First up on the agenda is proposed board policy change fifty-one thirty-one policy.
Great, thank you. I will be leaving within about eight to nine minutes, so I appreciate the chance to speak to this. This is a proposed new policy. It does not exist. It seemed to fit around fifty-one thirty-one based on what was before and after it in the board policy suite or collection. And it is a reflection of conversations that happened during the wellness, the ad hoc wellness committee last year, when individuals recognized that there were a significant number of board policies and state statute that dealt with health education in some way, and that it might be helpful to have them come together. And I worked, if you're getting the go-ahead from Sven Gusterson with Melanie Sutton, to draft the new health education policy. And just to sort of outline, we speak to, it speaks to a purpose. It defines, we actually spoke about comprehensive health education earlier in the finance committee. It identifies key components of a comprehensive health curriculum, which are coming from a number of sort of best practice sources, the C D C. And you're going to have to remind me of the other ones because it's now been four months since we did this. And then there's a section on implementation that by and large pins down existing Alaska statute and what the district already does to align with statute. I will say that under that bold point three, there's a second paragraph. It anticipates the potential passage of, I believe it's Senate Bill twenty-four, that would embed mental health education within an existing health curriculum. And I think that we, to some extent, are already doing that. Then, yeah, then there are a couple of other statutes. And then the last two sections, B and C, under implementation, simply name and link all of the health, all of the board policies that deal with health education in some capacity. So that is the overview. I think that the potential, I think there is a lot of good in here. There are certainly some, it's not listed under implementation, but with the move to middle school for sixth graders. And certainly with the proposal to blend, to put health education back into a classroom. Those things were not in the realm of possibility when this was initially drafted in, you know, October, November, just early December. But I am strongly in support of this policy and happy to have, maybe I'll have Melanie Sutton fill in the blanks with whatever I left off.
Thank you. Pretty much covered all of it. It was an extensive process to get to existing Alaska statute code, board policy, to pull it together into one cohesive piece similar to what the wellness policy was.
And, you know, I don't see here, and I don't remember if I emailed it to America Sullivan or not, because I don't remember a lot in the past few days. It's been a good scene. You did an amazing job. So there's a second supportive document out there that talks about each of these ten components of a comprehensive health curriculum, and how it is addressed by statute and or board policy, sort of how things are. Oh, it's right there. So there's a, I emailed you that today? Okay, great. It did happen. So it is a multi, it's an eighteen-page document, and it just shows where, under statute or Alaska code, we deal with health.
And our board policy further bounds, yes. So the initial section of it was where it lives in code and statute, with a specific language, and each one of those is linked. And then in the second through the next seventeen pages is by component of a comprehensive health program, where it's linked to board policy.
So like there, so injury prevention and personal safety is one of the health strands in a comprehensive health education. And that's what statute says. That's what board policy says. So this, this is sort of the one policy to rule them all, if you will, just pinning things down altogether. But I have to.
So philosophically, the board used to have really long policies with lots of detail. And then whenever they did need to change, it's a, it can be a multi-month process to do it. And Katie, Katie knows better than me. I can't remember which year, about six or seven years ago, when we switched to A E S B, it was more general in nature where the A R was, where all the detail lied. Because that way, if something new came up, like Alaska P O X, and now we really need to teach everyone about Alaska P O X, I don't know what it is, but it's in the business week.
Yeah.
Do you? When you have a board policy that's so restrictive as opposed to an A R, you can't make that switch real quick to change what's a priority because it's already been covered and you can't leave out the stuff that you put in the policy technically. And so I guess it's, it's just the philosophy of a very, very, very detailed board policy versus, you know, like board goals and guardrails are, allow the administration that, that left and right boundaries within which to operate, and of course, the intent of the board. And then there's a mechanism to get back to the board in order to say, okay, this is where we stand. We thought we would be here, but we're really here, and this is what we're doing. It just seems like this one is so detailed. And then there's those unintended consequences, like if you say that it can only be taught by a health teacher, and then all of a sudden you start realizing, we have a bunch of steam schools now. Does that mean they can no longer teach what they're teaching? Because the board policy is so prescriptive that there's those unintended consequences of schools that had already made a change to a different way of doing business. And, and that's why when I first started looking at it, it's, I mean, it's well-written. And I would certainly defer to everyone who rebut me as to whether it's, it's, you know, executable. But it just, it's so detailed that it, it gives the administration very little maneuver room to make changes. Like if you're short, we're short a lot of people right now. And then all of a sudden, can you not teach it if you don't meet the board policy goal? Or have you really set people up to not be able to comply with a board policy because they don't have the people that could do it? And then when it says it must be a hundred and twenty minutes or whatever per month, and then we close for six days, does that mean that they can't do math in English, which is a board goal? Because they haven't met their hundred and twenty minutes. And that's the problem with the really detailed ones is you, you're either accepting that it won't be complied with for lots of different reasons. But I would defer to everyone who knows anything about how education actually works. But that's what I picked up when I saw it.
And I, if I, if it's okay if I speak, and I just, I have the kind of the policy lens. And member Holland, I think you, you were here when I went through that whole process of switching over to the A E S B policies? Yeah, so our policy book was very, very detailed with no A Rs and everything was in policy. And then, and everything had to be reviewed by legal, just a little bit of history. We went through a process where we switched over to the A E S B policies. We kind of pulled out the high-level policy and then pulled the details into A Rs, which are a little more nimble when things happen or things change. I read this as well, and I just kind of like, a lot of this could, could be A R. You know, the overarching policy and then the A Rs, and the main support, which are still part of the policy manual. They're just a little bit more nimble. And I was just going to point out that all of this, they, A E S B will, will link everything that is.
Associated.
Thank you. Lost the word. Associated with, and so we have a lot of policies that have this as well. So just below the policy, they, they link everything for us if we ask.
Eric Basty speaking. You know, when I look at the definition that, that's in this policy, there's a lot of overlap with our S E L language and curriculum that is being taught by the classroom teacher currently. I, I wonder and worry a little bit by some of the definition of these terms, parallel with the taught by a certified endorsed health teacher, that will take away the ability for the classroom teacher to teach any of this content area. And I think that would be a potential negative impact to classrooms, as well as causing more confusion on that. I also think, I also know that if it goes through as it is with the certified, that health teacher will kill all of STEM classrooms. Will, well, not the project either way. Maldune will not be doing STEM classrooms online, will not be doing STEM classrooms.
Yeah, so it does say to the extent practicable, which is language that I have seen elsewhere to hedge.
And I would say I appreciate that flexibility. The rest of that sentence, you know, we want health educators, or we want health education to be taught by certificated, certified, endorsed health educators. I think that's the goal for every content area. So, I mean, that is, I think, talent management's mission, to make sure that principals are hiring folks who are certified educators and who are endorsed in the content area in which they teach. So I think we would want to make that statement for math teachers, social studies teachers, and, you know, kind of all the different world language, emerging specialty teachers. So it's, to me, unnecessary because I think we strive to do that always anyways. And then, does it become more restrictive when people call us out when we're unable to do that? And frankly, we are unable to do that this year because we have a hundred and forty vacancies. We have classrooms that are filled by long-term subs, paraprofessionals, and student teachers. You know, people who are teaching out of their endorsed area, out of necessity. So, I mean, that, that would be my only reservation language, but I do appreciate the, the lead into it because it does give us someone.
I feel really rude. I have to go pick up my child because that is, I was told I need to be someplace at three o'clock. There's a lot of good conversation that otherwise should be happening. You are the Chair of Governance. I'm under no delusion that a policy might be passed in seven and a half minutes.
Oh, thank you. What we'll do is take some notes without particular questions.
I think that you should continue your conversation.
Okay. Then when the teacher end up calls, the focus and whatnot, have the students make the parents feel relaxed. And I love when they think of that. Someone would like a certain, so be on time.
Because.
And drive safe.
To the extent. Remember that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is the intent to pack, to move this forward today? Or are we, do we have time to, like, review and think about this?
Um, I don't believe she actually moved it. I think she brought it to the committee.
Oh, okay.
Um, and, and I guess actually, as long as you are online, we continue to have a forum.
Oh, yes, I'm here. Yeah, I was a little late. I do apologize. But I, I, yeah, I, I'm not against the policy. I just think we, I would like to have a little bit more time to review it. And our next meeting is only like a week and a half away, so it wouldn't be like forever.
Indeed. You know, I think the magnitude of it, and I think Mr. Anderson's remarks are well-taken, that we should take a look at what parts of this should be in policy and what parts should be in A R. And, you know, in policy, I, I, I think it's a little unsettling to have a term like, to the extent possible, practical. That, that you want to make policy that's followed, and if it can't be followed, you want to be informed of that. Because every now and then, it's just not possible. But then if you make it a requirement that you're informed when it's not happening, you create a reporting burden. That when you put it on all the other things that are in policy, it becomes, it becomes pretty, pretty heavy of a load. So I would say especially, is this the first time administrators are seeing this in the detail of America?
Just so you know, Dave Donnelly and a member Wilson is.
Oh, okay, good. We've got solid work. Right. But is this the first time the administration's seeing this? Okay.
No, the Chief Academic Officer has seen this policy as part of the work that he asked me with helping assist the board. And Senior Director Brintrant has seen it as well. I believe he has seen it too.
Yeah.
Who? I'm sorry, who, who did you say?
Sven Gusterson has been in the room as well as Diana Meltrane.
Thanks. Are they in the room?
No.
Thank you.
I would want the opportunity for some different departments to come back and say, can they meet this, as it's written? But the other part too, is I, I do believe there is a lot of it that could be A R rather than set policy, and on something as complex, it's going to take a little bit to go through. But is there other feedback or comments from folks?
The only other comment I have is specifying a semester of health at both sixth and eighth grade. That kind of locks you in into scheduling as you're looking ahead. So that's just something else to look at in a policy.
Okay.
You know, when we, when we talked, and we haven't talked a lot, the bulk of our P T R increases in the last six, seven years really have been in secondary, where when you increase P T R, it means you cut another elective frequently. And I was thinking the same thing. I mean, we don't know what the future's going to hold for A S D. And whenever you make one thing untouchable and absolutely required above all else, and, and we do have another P T R increase, it, I don't know how hard it is to build a schedule, but talking to them apparently is difficult.
Sure.
And so anytime you lock out like a whole piece of time, apparently it can be problematic.
Yeah. You, you find that there are things about it that are just naturally constrained, that you wouldn't, that wouldn't occur to you. Because it's just a whole bunch of classes and you're sick of kids in them, right? But, um, yeah, there's some, some organic barriers that pop up that, that drive things to be a certain way. And that means they can't be any other way. So it's a fascinating process.
Yeah, the only thing, other thing I was going to ask Melanie to speak to is what the statutory requirements are around the sixth and eighth grade. So, like, what, what we're legally bound to do for health education.
So if we're looking at Alaska statute and Alaska code versus our own board policy versus what's currently posed in the statute, there are references in all three of those areas to specific grade levels for specific content.
Right.
And including the current, well, this couple of board policies that we're just coming through, specifically a reference six and eighth grade.
Right.
And then a couple other ones, such as the CPR bill that's coming through with L B grade Jacksons, sort of the references, certain secondary and other things. So, so.
Yeah, so there's specific content in sixth and eighth grade where required to instruct students on.
Yes.
Around human growth and development, sex education, tobacco and drug use, some of those things. So.
And that's why that was outlined, the way it was to inform the workers to, of all the different things that are out there and why the, where they fell under strands that are aligned to the national comprehensive health strengths.
Member Lessons is on as well. She just joined us. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
All of that was just to inform the policy that member Lessons was writing. So she had an understanding of what was out there.
Yep.
L B grade's latest bill has CPR and A E D, the extra home defibrillator, for K through twelve. Well, I talked to the staff this morning to try to figure out, does that have to be taught by a certified CPR trainer? They've got a lot to do on this bill to clean it up and move it forward. But there's, there's something every session that, and that's why I look at like these really detailed things. And it's like, but every single session, there's a new bill adding something that's important. And, and of course it is. It's just so much easier to change A R.
So I would certainly like to give administration time to come back and, and give me this and what they think should be A R and what should be in, in board policy. I mean, if we're going to expect it to happen, we need something in policy. But the specifics, I can understand being part of A R, so as things change. Especially when they change in the middle of summer or something, it doesn't need so often. There's opportunity to, to really make plans without waiting for the board to be. Given that, I, I don't believe member Watson's made a motion. That it's presented, I would move that this be placed on the, is one week enough time? Or do we need to give it the meeting after next? Which, I'm trying to remember if I'm going to be here for the next meeting.
You are, I'm sorry, are you referring to the next governance committee meeting?
Correct.
Yes, okay. What date is the next year? It's on the agenda, upcoming meetings.
Yeah, March seventh should be enough time.
Yeah.
If that's the case, we'll take this up on March seventh, but there is no objection from any of the committee members.
This is Carl. No objection, Mr. Chair.
Seeing, hearing none. We'll move to, unless, is there any other comments or any other points anyone wants to bring up? Seeing and hearing none. The second item on the agenda is policy review. It has been suggested we push this off partly so we can, can get to the other items and partly so that people do have a little more time to review. I'm trying to get in the habit of sending an email to committee members, reminding them of the topics that we're going to review. Unless somebody does have something about board policy twelve forty, twelve fifty, twelve sixty, or thirteen twelve that they want to bring up today. Anyone come with something they wanted to discuss or propose a change to?
Mr. Chair, this is Carl. I'm comfortable moving these to our next meeting.
Sorry, say that again. You're a little bit muffled.
Oh, this is Carl Jacobs. I, I'm comfortable moving with, moving the policy revisions to our March meeting. Thank you.
Without objection, that will also be moved to the March meeting. That brings us to item three, board policy thirty-five fifteen dot three and fifty-one thirty-one dot six two. I believe this was brought to us by Mr. Wang.
Yep, so, Mr. Chair, if I could have the floor briefly? So, thank you. So, member Wilson and I have partnered to, and in an effort to update the district's tobacco and vaping policy, we partnered with the American Lung Association specifically to draft policy revisions. And in doing so, we kind of took sample policies originally from the American Lung Association, drafted a version that worked better for A S D in consultation with district administration. And kind of in the same vein as Mr. Anderson spoke to regarding making policies with additional leeway, there is three proposals in front of us, I believe, that were refined further by district administration. And so while I can speak to the vision broadly, it might be helpful to have someone like Dr. Johnson Strumpler, if she's available on there, to kind of walk us through the most current version, if possible. Generally speaking, and I'll speak for myself, and if member Wilson wants to comment, I think the, the desire is to provide resources for students who suffer from either addiction or simply just making poor choices related to nicotine and vaping. As there is a therapeutic foster parent and, and member Wilson is as well, we both have, have been trained extensively that behavior is simply in unmet need from a psychological standpoint for a child. And so it's, it's kind of like a lock that is calling out for a key. And so in this particular instance, I know that I've had a great success with working with community partners to provide training, education, and resources to youth. The school districts, and not just A S D, but school districts in general, often rely on discipline, which can certainly be part of the equation, and natural consequences a hundred percent should occur. But I think there was a broader desire to ensure that we were providing adequate resources to really change the underlying behavior. And, you know, we, as a board, we spoke about, you know, the Jewel case that resulted in, you know, significant funds being paid out by that company. There are companies that, for better, for worse, have advertising that results in youth engaging in, and again, poor choices. And so anything that we can do to support those youth, support our parents, support our families, I think is a, is a common sense change. And so that's kind of the, the framing for the discussion, the policy drafts there today. Member Wilson, did you have other perspective you wanted to share?
You, you covered that very, very well. I appreciate that. I, I will say from a personal standpoint, the increasing amount of vaping for, for, that I've seen in, in the youth that have come into my home is just astronomical over the last probably five years. So I'm, I'm going to go ahead and assume that the, the impacts are seen in the schools as well. So it, it really is an intent to try to provide as much assistance as, as we can to, to bring in community partners to try to, to help with that education piece as well, and provide support to, to our schools as well. So, thank you for all that you said. Member Jacobs, that, that was covered perfectly.
We know which one you're going to start with, America. Appreciate it.
Um, let's start with fifty-one thirty-one first. On, so this is Dr. Nelson. I was kind of tasked with, like, looking at some language and kind of helping shape how the policies should look versus A R. There were a group of us, Melanie definitely helped, and others that are here, really look at language and give some suggestions. Much as member Wilson and member Jacobs have said, some of the way that we are working with students who have tobacco and nicotine addictions or issues has, has shifted within our system as well. And Eric Bachman's here. He could speak specifically about some of the work that they're doing in secondary on this year. But, so what you'll see in this, in this document is a shift in a punitive system versus a supportive educational kind of philosophy around how we work with students around tobacco and nicotine. We still look at those devices and consumption of on campus as something we, we want to not have. But rather than suspend students and be punitive in our actions, that we shift to a more educational model. And Eric, before we kind of go through the line item of, of all the policy, could you talk a little bit about the shifts that you've made at secondary this year?
Yeah. Can you hear me okay online?
Yep.
Great. So this is Eric Bachman, Senior Director of High Schools. And I just, I wanted the members of the board to know that at the beginning of this school year, the lead-up to the beginning of the school year, Melanie Sutton and a team of administrators worked on revising practice related to intervention and support for students who vape. We, we recognize that division-wide, there was inconsistent practice as to how schools were responding in terms of discipline to instances of vaping. So we created a uniform set of practices, really focused on the recognition that vaping may be a mechanism to address anxiety, stress, depression. It's also closely associated with addictive behavior. We know that. So we really wanted to try to create a, a response that was, that was in alignment with the, the, the focus of this revision. So we, we took a step in that direction. We're having great success. So, you know, first and second vaping incidents are. and second vaping incidents are really addressed in a supportive and educational manner rather than disciplinary. So, it wouldn't be until, you know, a a student, one showed up with illicit drugs like marijuana, that's a different issue. But if it's tobacco based vaping, we're supporting it with family outreach and educational intervention. So, I just wanted you guys to know that.
So, if we go back to the language of this policy, most of what you'll see, so that obviously the crossed out items are language we would remove. The green language is new language that we would add to the policy. And it's it's mostly to bring the policy in line with with what's happening in our in our buildings. We're also, much like the last policy discussion, trying to streamline the policy so that we have a very simple, understandable policy at the board level with ARs and potentially student handbook language that are more detailed and and help us guide our way. So, so you'll see just some language changes. One of the big things, especially around tobacco, is that there's ever changing products in the world around tobacco. And and we thought it was important to add the word nicotine to the board policy, mostly because not everything is like your traditional tobacco that that we grew up with, like cigarettes or chewing tobacco. There's all sorts of vaping products. There are things that we haven't even thought of yet that will be probably something that needs to be included in this this policy that haven't been, you know, released commercially yet. So, we wanted it to be broad enough that the board wouldn't necessarily have to change policy every time there's a new device or method of delivery. So, so you'll see a lot of that language in the first paragraph changed to reflect kind of a broader definition. The second paragraph there is really trying to get at like the definition of what we need by tobacco or nicotine. So, so it's definitely a broad kind of categorical definition to operate from. And as you move down, kind of reflecting more language, the one thing you will see on the very bottom of this page, where you see a big cross out version, this is this is work that are we would probably see more in an AR in terms of what happens when there's a violation of the policy. So, it would be in an AR and or student handbook language. But really, if you keep on scrolling down to get at the the more educational version of how we work with nicotine and tobacco, you know, this is more of a kind of philosophy statement from the board, like this is, this is how we would like you to direct that work. And so, you'll see non punitive equitable supportive intervention, educational consequences, as opposed to suspension, exclusion of activities, heat removal of class, those types of of punitive actions. So, so, and it even says at the end of that language that you'd rather have intervention programs versus disciplinary or punitive practices. So, so it just reflects that philosophy change around how we're working with it. And then you'll see much of the same as you walk walk through language that's removed, but is more AR type language. And then some cleaning up of the language to reflect this different kind of direction in the policy. So, so that's kind of a summary of those changes. I don't know, member Jacobs, do you want to take questions before moving on? Or would you like me to go through the other two?
I think it might be easier just to take questions on all three at once, if you'd be wanting to go talk to the other two policies.
Let's go to forty twenty. So, forty twenty speaks mostly to workplace and alcohol and drug free workplace. So, it really is talking a little bit more about the adult side of things versus the student side of things, although the student side of things is the adult workplace. So, so they kind of go together. But so again, you'll see some similar themes of trying to broaden the language to include nicotine nicotine delivery products as opposed to just tobacco, just so that we don't have to change a policy when there's a new device that comes out. And so, that language is throughout, and you'll see that in green throughout the new policy proposal. And so, at the end of the first paragraph, there's some additional language there. We really wanted to hone in that we, most of us in the district work with students at some capacity. And even if we don't work directly with them or around them. And so, we really need to be, it essentially is language to say we need to be good role models in the workplace around tobacco and alcohol free workplace. So, so this one is fairly straightforward. And then, at the very end of this policy, one of the things we did add at the very end is just a caveat that despite whatever laws or rules outside of the district that are taking place, if there's an employee issue that as a district, we refrain the right to have our own investigation into something regarding an employee. So, so that way, there's no, you know, no confusion around that. So. All right. So, we can go to the the last proposal. So, thirty five thirteen point three. So, this one is a little bit more detailed around a drug free and alcohol nicotine free campus. So, so we took away the first two paragraphs to add a new introductory paragraph. So, it really speaks to kind of the philosophy around why we need a a drug free campus essentially. And it opens up the definition of tobacco and nicotine delivery products as opposed to just tobacco or just drugs. And talks about the harmful effects. So, there's, if we keep on going down, scroll down a little bit. There's some language cleanup here. We essentially said, rather than just, you know, usage in facilities or vehicles, that we just don't want you under the influence at any time while you're at work. So, whether you took the products off campus and came to work, or whether you did them on campus and were there, we didn't want to differentiate between that. The next paragraph is a broad definition, much like you saw in a previous proposal, where we have a broad definition of what a tobacco product includes. So, scrolling a little bit more. So, this one speaks to the consequences for employees who violate the 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 policy, and it also speaks to visitors not using tobacco products while on school property as well. And so, that was something we felt needed to be expanded on. It it is vaping in general is becoming a much more, I guess, mainstream thing, even with our parents and our volunteers and things of that nature. So, just being more clear about that. So, that next paragraph follows in suit with our other policy proposals of a a non punitive, you know, intervention or educational consequence versus punitive. And so, it does speak specifically to students in this paragraph. So, and then it also goes on to talk about athletes. We didn't change that language. But we did add some kind of more expansive language about who who we're talking about when we say that district provides education. So, so providing that health education at every level, which is something that we do. And putting in particular emphasis on grades eight, six through eight, because that's where we see the biggest spike in usage in our kids is in middle school. So, going to that last paragraph on this the screen, we just got a little bit more detailed about the messaging around how we would, we would talk about tobacco and nicotine on our buildings. So, having posters and things of that nature, and what what you can and can't use nicotine or tobacco in. So, if, like, as an example, if a student is vaping in the parking lot in their own vehicle, that's still a violation of a nicotine free cap campus. So, and then the last paragraph added there, we we just said that some regular kind of reviews of our our policies should be assessed because things are changing all the time. And we want to make sure that things stay in line with local and federal and state and all of those policies and and regulations that are around drugs, alcohol, and and tobacco. And then, just to give us some time to shift, having a start date of January first, twenty twenty five of next year.
Questions from anyone? I've got one to lead off. There may be a real good reason for doing this, but on fifty one thirty one, it talks about clothing, bags, hats, other personal items, and also not accepting gifts or tons. Tobacco and nicotine product industry. Immediately, I thought pot shops, breweries, alcohol. And historically, that wasn't even a question. They were just illegal, period. But a pot shop is not illegal and not even intoxicating itself. But I presume that's not allowed. I can't wear my uncle or his T shirt when I'm volunteering in a building.
Yeah, I think we've already adopted this as a practice in schools, high schools, you know, when they put up all the banners and stuff of different local businesses advertising. They don't, they don't have breweries and things like that for for that reason. So, this probably enshrines in language what I think we already have.
Well, it's it's actually missing slightly. I'm kind of wondering, the language is similar, but differentiated. I'm almost wondering if these three couldn't be consolidated into a single by by talking about all of them in every location. I mean, the it seems like the the situation with marijuana now is much more like alcohol and cigarettes used to be than where before, that that was a much more serious thing. Now, it's being treated in a similar way. I'm wondering if for simplification's sake, this couldn't all be under one board policy.
Sure. I I do think there is a lot of overlap. I think we just want to have clear definitions of of the different things we're talking about if we do merge things.
Yes, there are some overlapping funding layers from marijuana tax that can come as revenue that's through consideration with the municipality. So, whatever we do and look at that vocabulary, that would be just making sure that we don't just making sure we operate in that. It's just an advisement.
Mr. Chair.
Municipality, I don't think that would be an issue, because it's not coming directly from the industry. Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you. Speaking to your question about consolidation of policies, as I was, you know, looking for language to kind of interject some additional updates and common sense changes to, I I asked myself if one policy would make sense. And I did go back and check with AASB, and to the best of my knowledge, they still maintain having separate versions of these specific policies makes more sense, even though there is a significant amount of overlap. I think that in part is due to the different lanes, as was alluded to by Dr. Johnson. I'm not personally opposed to combining the policies, but I also don't think that as long as the, I also think that as long as the language is is clear and trackable by administration, I think that that's really the important piece. And there may be, and I suspect there will be ARs to come from these potential changes, which would really be the the operational documents that that they're looking to for guidance.
And I have to admit, I don't know our policies well enough to know if the clothing bags, hats paragraph is repeated for marijuana shops. I'm thinking our policy was probably written before we had pot shops.
I will, I will tell you that in the student handbook, this is explicitly spoken to in terms of drugs and drugs and alcohol and marijuana marijuana specifically, but also nicotine and those types of things. So, and then there's also additional language with ASLA around sports, sports uniforms as well, like drugs and alcohol can't be, you know, obviously on an athletic uniform either. So.
I'm I'm just wondering if it's actually backed up by policy, if someone were to challenge the handbook. And I I guess my my inclination would be to accept these as updates and pass them to the board. But it it does seem like a single policy could be more encompassing, obviously with the details laid out in the various paragraphs. It it just caught me because if someone read the one about clothing or acceptances of guests, doesn't say anything about pot shops. But and like I said, I think our policy was written before it was a legal business. So, they wouldn't explicitly be prohibited anywhere, but I would like for them to be. Mr. Wang.
I would say my, I mean, I like the content of this, but my initial reaction is similar to Jim's comments about the one we were looking at from member lessons, and that a lot of this feels hyper specific for a policy. And I'm just wondering, you know, like that paragraph that we're looking at there, whether it's more appropriate to take the approach of the district will not engage in or allow the promotion of drugs or alcohol on school district properties. And then in AR, you've got that very detailed paragraph where that includes clothing and bags and hats and personal items. And this feels very detailed to me for a kind of a policy level. I don't know how other people think about that. Similarly, the very last paragraph of the last one we looked at that talks about a triennial re review. As Katie shared earlier, we have a requirement to review all policies on a three year rotation anyways. So, I don't know that we need to specifically state something that explicitly in a policy, because it is already part of the practice of the board through the government. It's not in. My two cents for what's worth.
Other comments, questions? Member Jacobs, did you have a specific motion about what we were?
So, Mr. Chair, if if the committee is comfortable with the, some of the the tweaks that even potentially that Mr. Wang was just referencing, and allowing me to to make those relatively minor changes, moving this item out of committee, I'd be happy to to make those changes and work with President Billamy to get it calendared for a future board meeting. If the committee would prefer there be one overarching policy, that can certainly be done. I would just point out again that our policies would be out of alignment with AASB, and would make future revisions potentially more challenging for future boards. With that said, that's not necessarily an insurmountable issue. So, I I think ultimately, these are common sense changes that I'm still make clear our stance on students engaging in age appropriate behavior, which doesn't involve drugs, alcohol, and vaping, tobacco use, while also increasing opportunities for family engagement as well as providing additional resources to actually stop the behavior, which is the underlying goal. So, I think we're taking a step in the right direction here. If, you know, we're taking, talking about two different vehicles to get to the same destination, that's really more of a preference. But I I like where these are at for now. If there's other concerns or changes beyond just the minor tweaks that we've discussed thus far, would be happy to go back to the drawing board if the committee wills it.
Other comments from anyone on the one or in the room? I'm I'm going to say it personally, and I'm saying as a chair, just as a member. I I like the idea of updating the language. But it does seem like to me at this point, the tobacco, nicotine, alcohol, and pot are kind of on the same level at a at a societal or legally in Alaska. And that they're they all have some level of legality, and we don't want any of them on our campuses. So, they they're all similar in that regard, but but they are, each one of them is different from each other. And I I do wonder if a comprehensive policy that is skinnier with ARs covering the the detail would be more appropriate. I I also don't see any problem in adopting these and making changes like that. um, would be more appropriate. I, I also don't see any problem in adopting these and making changes like that down the road. I mean, I, I, I see value in the board putting itself on the record as, going, we, we want to be clear on this. Um, but I'm, I'm kind of wondering if we couldn't be more clear. Um, which of course comes at the expense of a lot of work done by people that aren't me. But yes, sir.
Uh, this is Eric Viste from elementary. I mean, from my perspective, I, I support like intent and everything about this. The intervention program for board awareness, and then under consideration, the resources available at elementary for intervention are much more limited than the, the middle school or high school level. We don't have counselors at every building, right? Um, and, and intervention programs as a remediation after an event are fewer. So many of the programs that are out there are for upper grade levels. So we put this in as a K-12 or pre-K-12, which there's a lot of very happy to say that.
Yeah.
We, we see it generally onset around fourth grade or ish, or thereabouts. It's some kind of pattern we've been nursing. Um, is that the age level access or curriculum? And then when we're talking about developmental level to actually access content from language vocabulary, it's much more limited than elementary. So when we talk about a comprehensive K-12 program, there's differences in terms of availability of resources and access that I think the board needs to be aware of when you move forward of sweeping uh, policy like this.
So you made me flash on brightly colored Fisher Price. It's gonna take a while to get out of there. America?
President Bellamy.
President Bellamy?
Oh, yeah, thank you. I, I, maybe I just need a safety blanket, but I like having the three. Uh, but I do think that we can, my, you know, as we move forward, and I am forgetting them out of committee, but if we can move forward and, um, you know, just check three, it, even before three years, if we need to make some adjustments. Uh, because you're right, Andy. Um, I, I just, it scares me to put everything in one. Um, but at the same time, we may be able to. I just don't know that yet. So.
Concern was just that we have some really detailed language about tobacco and nicotine, and that may or may not exist for pot. Um, to me, the advantage of consolidating them means.
It would exist in our schools for pot.
Second?
It would exist in our schools for pot. Right? I mean, I know that if I'm, and maybe I'm misunderstanding your comments, but for me, me, all of these things are not allowed.
Correct.
Even, even if they are um, legal in the city.
Just if somebody does make that challenge and pushes it.
Yeah. And I guess I would, I would rather uh, fight that challenge if it comes and um, or, or tweak, or tweak our policy before it comes. Um, but I, I, I don't know. I, I think to do less at this, right now, because it is, it is changing. That landscape is really changing, or this landscape is changing. And I don't know that we can come up with one, two, three, four, five policies that's going to cover all the possibilities. But, um, anyway, I, I appreciate the team's work on this and um, I'm comfortable moving it out of committee with the three, uh, with the understanding that we might be able to put some of this in an AR at some point, and we might be able to um, put uh, uh, you know, really put these all together in one. I, I just, I'm just a little nervous to do it now.
Are, are you comfortable enough to make a motion?
I sure am. I so moved.
Do we have a second?
So I'll second.
Member Jacob seconds. Um, and I, to further discussion, I, I can agree with with President Bellamy that we can go ahead and move this and it strengthens the language, modernizes the language in a lot of cases. Um, but I, I do think maybe it's still worth uh, scrutiny. And of course, we'd invite the administration to come back with things that might be better suited as an AR. Um, and governance can work on is the idea that we may be able to consolidate it and make it crystal clear for all of them all the time. So, yeah. Uh, that's been, the, the only concern I have is just the language is a little different as you move from drug to drug. And that opens up fractures that, that someone can weasel through. I don't think anyone's going to do anything severe and get away with it. But it just reduces the amount of time we have to spend arguing with people if it's uh, all airtight. So it has been moved and seconded to take these to the board with a positive recommendation from the committee. Any discussion before we vote?
Uh, Mr. Chair, the only thing I would bring up and just a reminder for the committee members that um, this policy wouldn't take effect until next January, which gives administration plenty of time to contemplate ARs and minor tweaks to the policy if needed to remove language, uh, to align with those ARs. So there's uh, plenty of time to, to improve um, as the months go along.
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate that, Member Jacobs, because just sitting here, I found a couple typos that I might want to rewrite. So.
Would you want to hold this until the next governance committee meeting and bring it back as revised?
Um, we could certainly do that. Um, there, there's like one sentence that's kind of awkward that we should probably rewrite. And we could do, like I could work with Member Jacobs to do a more general statement around um, the clothing kind of display of nicotine and, and those types of things to make it more succinct. So. Um, yeah, I, I, I'm, if, if the board is okay with us making those changes kind of as we move it forward, um, we can do that, or we could hold and talk about it at the next conference.
Andy, I think it's, I think it's fine to let them edit it a little bit, you know, those kind of things before it goes.
Thank you, Member Donley. Um, any objection from any of the committee members on holding this off until the next meeting on March seventh? Hearing none, uh, we'll do that. And um, everyone can know that, that generally we are very in favor. There's some typos and uh, we'll look at it again, probably without so much debate at that time. So, thank you. And uh, that brings us to the one from Member, of Mr. Lang, resolution in support of reemployment of retired teachers.
Thank you. Um, in two thousand eighteen, uh, the state passed Senate Bill one eighty-five, which allowed for um, districts to rehire teachers who've retired into um, the TRS retirement system. So tier one, tier two employees. Up until that point, we had been limited to hiring folks at point four nine. This allows for the full-time reemployment. The first step in that process is if districts want to participate is the board has to adopt a, a policy by resolution acknowledging all of the um, kind of unique stipulations and that statute around those rehires. Um, when we looked at this uh, in shortly after twenty eighteen, um, at the time, we didn't have a vacancy rate where we felt we really needed to add this to our, you know, menu of options. Um, since that time, things have really shifted in the labor market, and we think we could really benefit from the ability to hire experienced retired teachers who are willing to come back and work for us full-time in those areas where we have persistent vacancies. So, um, this is the template of the resolution um, that the state uh, suggests that boards uh, adopt into policy by resolution. And so um, I'm bringing it to governance um, in the hopes that the board would support that um, desire for the administration to utilize this as an option um, and see if it could be forwarded to um, a regular board meeting agenda for approval.
Any questions or comments from anyone in the room or online?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. President Bell?
Yes, thank you. I, I'm glad to see it because I think uh, it gives us more flexibility. Um, I, I know throughout this year, we've gotten several uh, emails addressing this situation and uh, asking why ASC is not doing this or doing that or allowing this. It's like we were, you know, the, so this clarified, this, if this passes, and I hope it does, it will really give us more flexibility and um, uh, uh, you know, especially during ti- this time when we are really, really trying to, um, I mean, we're struggling with, with uh, subs as well as getting full-time staff. So, and I know that there are people out there that's willing to do this.
Anyone like to make a motion that we move this to the board with a positive recommendation?
I'll make that motion if I can. Oh, well, that's right, because member lessons had to leave, right?
Correct.
I'll second.
Member Donley and um,
Number Jacob.
Member Jacob's online as well. So I did hear a second. Um, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion before we vote? Here we go.
Uh, I'm sorry. If we have time, Marty, can you just tell us what, what, where the flexibility would be for us um, more than what we have right now?
Yeah, I mean, the, this would allow us, you know, to, to tap into that pool of folks that are out there who have chosen to retire but feel like they still, you know, could benefit from coming back and work some. I talked to my counterpart in Keen Eye and they're currently um, reemploying thirteen retired teachers, you know, and we're a much larger district with I think a lot more retirees in Anchorage. So I think especially uh, in our hardest-to-fill positions around special ed, this really gives us another pool of potential candidates that we're just not finding anywhere else. Um, it allows it, I mean, the, the onboarding process of bringing people back in from retirement is pretty easy because they tend to know the district and, you know, most of our practices. Um, the only maybe downside in, in this is that there is a little bit of administrative burden. We have some extra reporting we have to do with the state. Payroll has to set up some s- specific functions for these individuals. And it is somewhat costly because we do have to um, give them access to um, our health plans and we have to pay into TRS on their behalf, and we'll also have to make a contribution into social security. So. Um, and often we'll be bringing them back probably at a higher placement on the salary range as well. But again, I think the upside of bringing in an experienced teacher to fill a vacancy, we can't fill any way, you know, other way is at this point, um, definitely to our advantage.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
The, the resolution starts out that the school board requests to enter into an agreement. Is the request to the administration?
I think the agreement is with the State of Alaska Department of Retirement Benefits.
Shouldn't we say who we're sending this resolution? I mean, asking for permission?
I can certainly um, add some language to clarify that, or thi- this was the state's template. This is essentially what Keen Eye adopted. Um, but yeah, we need to clarify that. Member Donley, I'm happy to, to do that.
Can you restate your, can you restate your uh, recommendation, Member Donley?
It just doesn't say who we're asking for permission to be able to hire the retired teachers to. I didn't see it. Of course, I can't see the whole thing at the same time.
Maybe that last therefore, now therefore be it further, uh, is the uh, uh, and the State of Alaska Department of Administration?
Yeah, yeah, there, yeah.
You want that up at the top, though? Is that what you're saying?
I, I, well, I just think it would be clearer if it was at the top that that's who we're asking, you know, um, or requesting permission to utilize the new law.
So I'm happy to amend that to mirror the language at the bottom in the conclusion in that first whereas paragraph.
Sure. Yeah. So, thank you. It's, it's not a big deal, I guess, because it is in the very bottom. Yeah.
So we do have a slightly amended version before us. Are there any other questions or comments before we vote? Seeing hearing no one, um, I'll ask members of committee to vote yes on sending this to the board uh, as amended for adoption, or no to decline this. So, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? We have sent this on to the board for approval. Um, that is everything on our agenda for today. Uh, Zoom would have anything else they wish to bring up or talk about? Seeing and hearing no one, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second? Somebody tried to second. It's not, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.